All right. Good evening and welcome to the Proctor Select Board Meeting of September 23. If you'd please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business would be to review and approve the agenda. A motion would be in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
Are there any changes, deletions, amendments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. A motion would be in order to approve the September 8th Select Board Meeting minutes as presented.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment. We don't have anyone with us, but I'll just say Fall Festival's on Saturday, 11 to 3:00. So it'd be nice to pop down and support your local classes or organizations or have a lot of kids that are being entrepreneurs and have come in to request booths. So if you like bracelets, I think there's gonna be a lot of bracelets by probably 10, 11, 12-year-olds. So stop down. There'll be a lot of different things. There'll be music. There'll be a hula hoop show, pumpkin decorating. We've got games for the kids. So a lot of things to do that are free for the kids. Not just... We don't have our hand in your pocket all the time.
And we are kind of on a hold with fireworks right now pending the weather. We're concerned about having fireworks go off in the field being so dry.
Yeah.
So, but we also have a contract which you have to cancel within so many days to reschedule, and you have to reschedule in so many days. So I'm gonna hold off and hopefully get to them by Thursday morning to let them know if it rains. We feel good. They've asked our fire department to go out there and hose it down. Unfortunately, the fire trucks can't get behind to get to the swamp area. They could do the field, but if they shoot up and they go back, it's kinda dry back there and it's...
It's supposed to be tomorrow, Thursday.
It's supposed to rain, yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think very much. Yeah, I don't know.
I'm just leery. I said, you know, contractor, no. I said, I'm not taking a risk of a fire if it's really, really dry, so...
So do a little re-lease and go home. All right. Everyone had opportunity to see and sign the orders?
Yes.
So a motion would be in order to reappoint Albert Winter as fire warden for 10 years. This has got some serious, like, you're in.
Yeah, 82.
So a motion to employ Albert.
We had appointed him already, but it was a five-year term, and I found this letter and they're saying 10 years, so I'm like, well, I better do it. So I need everyone's signature on it, so...
All right. Is there a second?
To make him official.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Albert's opposed to it.
Ask you if you want to oppose.
That's not an option, Albert. 10 years, geez. That's a serious commitment.
Yeah.
It's been 32 or 33 years now.
Oh, I know, but I'm just surprised from the state. That's a significant ask.
You know, their staffing has been cut back. It used to be five.
Yeah.
And it's a process, you know, so it's like, wow, why do it five? Let's do it 10.
Yeah. All right. 2651 West Street update.
Okay, so I also included that in my manager's report, just kind of as a placeholder. But I did talk to Denise and nothing has been done. They said that the trees were cut down because there was a beam in the house that wasn't... They couldn't get down, and they thought the tree falling on it would take it down. And I said, it just made the property actually worse and more difficult to clean up. So they said they're gonna get somebody to clean it up. I said, I'd like a deadline. I said, you know, there have been complaints. I said, we could always make a move to clean it up ourselves, but then the cost would be added to you as a lien on the property. So she said, no, I don't want anybody cleaning up my property, and she said she has no intentions of selling it. So I said, will it be cleaned up before the winter, before December? She said, yes.
So I think, doubtful, but if it's not come spring, I mean, there's nothing we can do once snow flies, but come springtime, we've gotta figure something out. It's disrespectful for the people that live over there. They're trying to make a go of it with the castle. I mean, it's just... I mean, I'd be irritated if I had a business and I was next to my business. I mean, that's just...
I mean, it's gonna be costly and there's no guarantee we get reimbursed for the expense that we put into it.
Well, can't you just put a lien on the property?
You can, but you can't tax-sell it based on that lien.
No, but I mean, I guess the lien would just lay on the property forever and...
But we'd still have that expense hanging over our head.
Well, I don't know. Oh, I guess we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it, but...
I did ask her not to keep bringing things, 'cause they are bringing more things.
Well, the other thing is maybe we have to start, we have to give the...
I think we should start ticketing.
The ticketing. And if it's, maybe that's, you know...
Yep.
Yeah, I really think we probably should have been ticketing all this time. Sometimes we're too soft with people.
Right.
So, but... So, yeah, I think that... Is she gonna get back to you? Like, is it gonna be like November 21st or something?
She didn't say she'd get back to me.
Okay. I would just say to her, listen, we're gonna give you time, you know, accepting you at your word, but come spring, if it's not gone and there's nothing, then we're gonna start ticketing you. And that just is every day just builds.
Right.
So, and maybe send that tour in a letter so that you have a...
Yeah. Well, I could start doing it too, like, in October, because once you start, I mean, if it's not starting to be cleaned up in October, it's not gonna be done by December.
Yeah, but I mean, send a letter tour what that schedule looks like in the ordinance. So, because it's hard to explain, I think, but you need to read it. We skipped over open public comment, 'cause no one was here. Was there something you wanted to share?
Just wanted to see.
Okay.
I didn't know if you had one.
Okay. And is your first name Jaden?
Yes.
Okay, that's like that.
Wanted to see where it all happened, huh?
Okay, great. All right. You have the traffic ordinance revisions in your packet, and so there's some explanation. There was a letter also from the sheriff, and I think we discussed this a little bit before. Without including this in the ordinance, then they just start at $5. Once they go 5, 10, 15, or something like that, so... Rather than if it's in the ordinance, then it becomes a municipal violation, so... Do you wanna...
So I pulled off this because he made reference to Kane Street and North Street, but North Street is in the ordinance, so he could actually ticket North Street.
Okay.
That is in the ordinance. The thing that surprised me is that there was this revision done, and Kane Street was also added, but for some reason, in the final revisions, it's not in there. And I don't know why. I looked back. I found this back in, when was this done? When this was, like, 2021. And there was an E added that Kane Street, between the intersection of Kane and West and the end of Kane, that there'd be no parking. So I don't know why, if it accidentally just got dropped off when they were...
I don't know, 'cause Kane Street was a pretty hot topic. I know when we were...
Yeah.
I know.
I mean, I was taking notes at the time. I know it was a hotspot, so to speak, of concern at the time. So it might have just been an oversight, I guess.
'Cause if you notice, it goes through F, and then the new one, it's through E. So somehow it got missed, and I don't know how.
So what do we do, take and add that back into...
I would like to see that added back in, yes.
So add E back in. Yeah, okay. And then North Street is already on there. And then after we do that, do you send him an updated one? Did you let him know North Street was on there?
No, I haven't yet.
Okay.
And also, I don't know if it belongs in here or not, but we might need signs too. But I think we need to address parking on Beaver Pond, the fishing area, because there's a lot more people loading trucks and four-wheelers and just filling up the whole road there to go up into the entrance of Omea.
So that's on the west side?
Yep. So I was gonna reach out to Omea too to see if they have an issue. Someone suggested putting, like, a chain across, and I said, it's not our property.
Yeah.
We can't do that.
They were gonna felled trees, I thought they said, or something.
So I'm gonna reach out to them, but I didn't know if something should be in here as well, 'cause if we put signs, whoops, we're gonna run into the same situation.
So why don't you reach out to Omea and we'll see what their preference is. In the meantime, I think we should include Kane Street. And, I mean, if we decide to add that in there, it's not that big a deal to...
Right. I mean, I can write up something just for it to send you guys to look at as far as the verbiage and stuff, so...
I would just reach out to Joel, maybe, and see what he says.
Okay.
In a meeting in the past, did we have a little discussion about what the sheriff said about having times certain that they could park there to try and make sure they were within...
Oh, so you wanna have times on them?
Yeah, he wanted, like, no long-term parking there, like, you know.
Are they off the road when they park?
Yeah, they were, but people can't fish there, 'cause they're... I mean, you're not talking a truck and a trailer. You're talking probably a bunch of trucks and trailers and four-wheelers, and then they race up and down the road, and then they go up in the woods.
Oh, this is right off the pond itself. Yeah.
Yeah, where they're cleared, where you can fish off the side of the road.
Right, yeah.
It's that little, where there's gravel chat area there, up kind of on the northwest side, yeah.
I think it's just if they're there all day, it kinda makes it so no one else can park there to fish.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't hang out there, so it's hard for me to have...
They can just drive through town on their four-wheelers like everybody else.
What's yours? You can't designate parking really for any...
Well, you could say two-hour parking or something, 30-minute park. I mean, they're going up on the mountain. 30 minutes really isn't...
Yeah, two-hour. You could maybe do that, time it.
Yeah.
Two-hour parking.
I don't know. So I'm just gonna have to come and mark the tire, right? So you're going two hours to...
Right. The police, my sister suggested.
I'll talk to Omea.
Yeah, I would speak with Joel and see if they see it as... And then... All right, so in the meantime, a motion would be in order to... Oh, I'm sorry, Albert.
I was just gonna ask if we could discuss a few other issues, you know, typos in this ordinance. Since how we're talking the ordinance. On page one,
Yeah.
Highway number six, Gorham Bridget Road. Could we change that to Bridge?
I guess.
Town highway number 12, Elam Street. Can we change that to Elm?
Okay.
Just so you know, I didn't type this up, okay?
And just so you know, I didn't read through all this, 'cause I knew we were just talking about the one page, so... Okay, what else?
Second, town highway number 26. Can we make that Gibbs? It doesn't have an S.
Okay.
And then on page two, town highway 55, it's called, there, it's Loop Road. Can we make that Loop Street? 'Cause it's referenced as Loop Street in all the other places in the document and...
Oh, and 59.
And then highway 59, instead of Cliff Street, can we make that Cliff Street?
And then 61.
Yeah.
What is town highway 53? Just, I'm curious. I don't think it's called Olympus Road Extension, is it? It's just Olympus Road.
I think so too, 'cause I think it's just...
Oh, there is Olympus Road up here, though. So what is Olympus Road Extension?
Is that the one that comes down by the... No, 'cause that would be...
Tower Road. Is that in here?
Well, I didn't know if they considered from the, like, school up, the extension and the rest of it, Olympus Road, or if the other ends...
Power Road is, I guess.
Well, there's another few houses that go up towards the water tank, right?
Isn't that Tower Road?
That's Tower Road, though.
That's Tower Road, yeah.
So what is that, then? Olympus Road Extension?
Yeah, I know.
I don't know. I'm trying to... I always thought it was just one, Olympus Road was one road.
Yes, exactly.
I'll check on that. I'll check on that in Tower Road.
Certainly would be able to tell us, but we're...
Okay. All right.
Oh, that's probably Grove, yeah. I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, that's a good one to check out, yeah.
And then section one on page two, you know, it says that, you know, you can't violate unless it's per law enforcement, but it's all emergency personnel there. You know, the fire department usually does a lot of that. What are they talking about? Section one.
And which article?
You know, traffic control devices, except in response to the directions of law enforcement officer. You know, it's really all of the emergency personnel, utility, fire department, and police.
Well, if we're gonna get that deep into it, we're gonna have to just schedule to have this on the agenda. I mean, and I don't mind doing that next meeting, but we have Lisa here, so it's like having your attorney here, where she sits here and we're just paying her to be here, so...
Oh, okay. Well, there's a number of other things, so yes.
Well, how about this? You could send them to, or give them to Judy and maybe, or myself, and we could just make a correction on it.
Like, some of these I can easily change. Anything you want wording different, I'll make it, I'll do them like in red.
Yeah. How about that? Can we just do that?
Yeah, that would work. There might be some footwork, because I think there's at least three stop signs that aren't listed, you know, but...
Okay, so let's do that. You just give your highlighted copy to her, and then at the next meeting, we can look at that.
Yep.
In the meantime, a motion would be in order to add letter E under Article 7 Parking, Section 1, Kane Street.
Albert, you can just give me your hard copy if you want, unless you want me to make a copy of it?
No, I don't have a copy.
Okay.
There's some on my foot, some on my lap here. Make any sense, it's in pink. And then see here, you know, in the middle of the highway, there's...
Okay, reference, okay. Oh, different, okay.
You know, and then here, I was looking at the stop sign on East Street. And then, you know, I can come down if you have any questions. Same thing, switching these, these. And then here's one, you know, in front of West Street, West Street Market on West Street, there's a stop sign.
Right.
No stop sign. There is a stop sign. It's not listed. The one at Beaver Pond on West Street's not listed, so...
All right.
And that's just, just notes I had.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. A motion would be in order to add, under Article 7, Parking, Section 1, E, Kane Street, to the parking ordinance.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Are you talking to us, Lisa, about the tower also?
The cell tower? I did not know I was on the agenda for that.
I'm just asking. No, she wasn't.
I certainly, yeah, no, I think...
I wanted them to get a copy of it, like I gave you a copy of it.
Sure, sure.
For review and if they had any questions, but we didn't want, 'cause ultimately, I think they're looking for approval from us Verizon is to kind of agree with what they're saying. And Celia would like to sit down with me first to kind of talk about it before the board does take it in.
Gotcha.
So I just wanted to make them aware of that, but I wanted to put it in front of you so you'd be aware of it. And I don't know if you have questions from it or not.
Did you get a map with it or not?
You did, okay.
I think so. I think the whole packet. I just didn't copy the whole thing, 'cause...
All right.
I was trying to save people.
So put on the...
Yeah, I haven't had the chance to digest that whole document either, so...
Okay. I still find it bizarre that a Butters didn't get any notice about it, so... I mean, when it first came, we received the map, the whole shebang, and the library's in a Butters to that, and we don't receive anything.
I mean, the whole gist of this is basically Verizon wants to lease to T-Mobile to expand the tower.
Well, another tower.
Well, like, expand the existing tower.
So they're gonna build on the same tower. It's just gonna go out and up.
Where's this tower?
So it's on, you know that road that is on the other side of...
Crestway, it's off of Crestway.
Where, isn't it on the other side of where Reed's...
Yeah, yeah.
So if you take that road and go up, yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I know that well.
Yeah. Yeah. So originally, Lyman leased the property to them, and they put that tower up quite some time ago. And then now they're doing something else, so...
So they just showing us they got permits for it, they got everything. They just want to make us aware of that, so...
Well, and that, everyone saying, yes, they think it's the greatest thing since sliced bread too, I think.
Yeah, you raise an interesting question about a Butters, and I mean, I'm not sure whether they even have to come to the town to get these things approved. I think they're approved by the Public Service Board.
Well, that's what's in here, but it says...
But you would think a Butters, I remember a Butters came to a town meeting in West Rollin' when Flynn's put one up on their land.
Well, maybe, and we did get the map and everything originally, so maybe they consider it their...
But that was the initial tower.
Yeah, yeah.
When they're just adding another carrier to the same tower, maybe it's a different process.
They're building up pretty substantially.
Well, I think the reason they notified us is because they're adding T-Mobile, and T-Mobile, like, we build Verizon, and they're not gonna be, T-Mobile's not gonna be built by us. They're gonna be built by Verizon.
Kind of like the information from the horse trader?
It's their...
Worry about, don't worry about what they do tell you. Worry about what they don't tell you.
Sounds like a business owner having a subdivision, and then we're not really involved, but they wanna make us aware of it.
There's some interesting stuff I have to untangle with that whole cell tower.
Yeah.
All right.
It's not adding up.
So you're here for the MOU between Tyler Technologies and the town?
Yes, I wanna start with, I have a brief progress report from them, which is now even dated by a week, and they've been, you've probably seen them all around town, and I've only heard good things other than the initial confusion with how to get, you know, get scheduled for an appointment, but I think we worked through that. I mean, tell me if you've heard differently, but...
I scheduled an appointment and I didn't have any issue, and they were there, and it took all of 10 minutes, I think.
I haven't heard anything negative. I mean, I've heard from them that people slam the door in their face.
Well, you know, you always have a few of those people that say, get off my property. I've had to back down people's driveways. I did my time doing this for quite a lot of years, you know, yeah. But in general, I think people have been pretty...
I haven't heard of anyone...
Pretty open to it.
I haven't heard of anyone that's a problem, so...
I've heard from the team, and they, you know, they say that the inspections, they've gotten, I think he said, Jake said, I met with Jake in Politt today, and he said, I think, 25% of all parcels, they've actually been inside in Proctor. And that's, that's pretty good, this far forward. Scheduling inspections have kind of fallen off, so hopefully that won't be, you know, all we get for that. Maybe, you know, getting the word out on whatever the town's website or front porch for...
We put it out there several times, so, yeah.
Yeah, you know, there will always those people, it'll be those people that decide to just take their chances, let us guess from the outside, and we'd rather not, and for a lot of people, it's not gonna behoove them to do that, but...
Yeah.
The fact is, people aren't required to let us in.
Right.
They know that now. Taxpayers maybe didn't know that 30 years ago.
It's like the Kramer analogy, doesn't make any difference if we're all levels in there. It's on the space.
Yeah, I mean, I always give people the example of, you know, like, my house. I'm kind of the practical old Vermonter, but it's vinyl siding on my house, 'cause I couldn't keep the darn thing painted properly. But inside of it, I got a 50-year-old kitchen, so, you know, by not showing the inside of it, they'd look at the vinyl siding on the outside and say, oh, that's new, and it was brand new. It was happening during the time we did our last remodel. I was like, don't be misled by that. There's a lot of other work that needs to be done here. So, you know, those are the folks that, you know, might wanna let us...
Yeah, I think that most people, people have come to the library and said they've had, they've stopped by. They were impressed by the fact that, one, that they had the same color shirt on, that they were... It was easy to access or to see who they were, you know, and so people appreciate that, because in some of our neighborhoods, you don't get a lot of people walking around on foot. So it, you know, starts to, and they were up in Chiron Park the other day, and then they left again. If you weren't there, like a flyer or whatever that said, you know, call, whatever, so...
Yep. The worst thing I've heard is one person got a notice when he'd already had an inspection where his car didn't get hold from the lunch that was going out with cold calls. And I said, well, I'd rather have them do that than miss somebody entirely, so...
Sure.
So I used a copy of that progress report, that's something you want for minutes. But we're asking for a slight change to the contract as per their proposal. You know, things always change when you get into these things, and the conversion was a little stickier than we thought it was gonna be. Not as much data came over from ProVal to Patriot as we had hoped. So me and my staff have done quite a lot of data entry, and the Tyler staff has been happy to do quite a bit as well. But we're getting it done, and then there was the added cost where we're on the cloud, where they only allow us with, Catalyst only allows us so many remote users. Anyway, long story short, they need that access. It called for us to pay for that in the contract. They are willing to pay that. We're talking about dispensing with the informal hearings. So I have an MOU on that. I do not approve of informal hearings myself. I don't like them. I think your last reappraisal was a case in point of why you don't wanna do them, because people are, A, misled that it's part of the statutory process, and it's not, and B, the record-keeping, that's like another whole change of assessment list that you've gotta keep. So when I came on board right after your reappraisal, Celia had the informal numbers from the reappraisal team, and she didn't have the preliminary numbers that went out before Lister's grievance. So the state doesn't recognize these informal hearings. A lot of companies do it as kind of an error check of their work, and they do it instead of being there at Lister's grievance. Well, I would rather review that with their work with them myself and be confident in those numbers and have them there at Lister's grievance, which is the legal statutory process, that we have to keep track of the number before that, the assessed value before that, the assessed value after Lister's grievance, and then on and on to the next series, so...
So the bottom line is, is this costing us more money?
It's not, no. It's saving them time. In my opinion, it's kind of making the process more the way I would like it to be anyway, because it would, I think, cost you more money. The way I prefer to do things, if they're doing informal hearings, I'm not gonna be out there while they're doing that. I'm gonna supervise that and review all of that. So that's double work for them, 'cause I'm gonna require them to be at Lister's grievances as well, but this way I won't have to be at the informal hearings as well. I think it's just a, it's a less transparent process. It shouldn't be that way, and I know plenty of companies do it, so it's not that way. But it feels like by calling it an informal appeal, that's A, misleading, 'cause it's not a legal process. But it can be kind of a make-a-deal day with the appraisal firm, and I don't think anything should work that way for the reappraisal. It should all be above board.
So instead of doing informal hearing, you're going to meet with Tyler, go over the numbers, and prepare for the grievance. People who wanna grieve then will set a time and meet with you and a Tyler representative, just like...
Correct, well, I have to hold those, they will be there to explain their numbers to the taxpayer.
Okay.
And then go out with me and do an additional review, you know, there'll be those that never let us in in the beginning, that then find something wrong with it, don't like the, they rolled the dice and don't like our guests, so then we'll have to go out and re-inspect them, so, but that's gonna be the case anyway.
But wouldn't we miss kind of that one step where you, instead of going over all of these evaluations and being prepared for someone to grieve and then sit down with them? Wouldn't you just wait and see who grieves and then go over those with them?
Um.
Eliminate, you know what I mean, like, to eliminate too mu- like, why would you sit down, spend all that time with them, going over every single one? For preparing for a grievance hearing when maybe five percent are gonna grieve? And not ju- why not just go over those five percent with Tyler at that time?
Well, I'm gonna have to review them all with Tyler anyway. I, I'm gonna go through them and review myself and ask them for reports and the state's gonna require that too.
Okay.
Of um, what sale properties versus non-sale properties change, I forget what the, I always forget what, it was a three-prong test before. They got rid of the homestead part of it.
So this would be part of the process anyway, so we're getting rid of one step.
Yes.
And we're just down to two steps.
Yes.
Okay, and do we have any idea, I mean, have you seen any of the numbers yet?
No, no, they haven't done their sales analysis yet, no, no, no.
And when do we think that's gonna be done then?
Um, they'll probably be delivering some, some preliminary numbers to me probably December, maybe November.
Okay.
Um, when they get all the numbers crunched, you know, from looking at the sale properties and, and putting that data in um. Yeah, and then it'll take some, some review of it.
You're not gonna be like setting the grieve then till like spring, it sounds like.
No, I, I, that's, we can't, your grievances cannot be held until you've lodged the preliminary grant list. So you have to send out a formal notice to everybody, this, with their preliminary value. They still have, absolutely have the right to grieve it. Um, it's just this informal process is not a legal process. I can see if you got a town of maybe forty thousand parcels that maybe, maybe let them take care of the ones that are in error or they, you know, have a typo, number of bathrooms or something.
Yeah.
Um, but I think for eight hundred parcels, we can look at it.
And then once this is lodged, everyone's been grieved and it's settled, this information will then all be uploaded also to the CAI or whatever that is on the website, so that'll be updated.
The Lister cards, the property record cards, like we have them linked to the IIS now, yes, will, will be done in um, from Patriot in subsequent years, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So on this, I just wanna, I'm gonna be Albert right now. So um, on the last paragraph, it says, in addition, both parties agreed not have Tyler, can we just put, agree not to have Tyler?
Uh, yeah, he's missing a little phrase, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Not to have Tyler conduct informal.
You agree to not have them or agree not to have them?
He's missing a little word there, yes. I thought, I thought it would call it this morning and I said, aw, Proctor's isn't quite right.
Albert?
I was gonna say, you know, and the last time we did the reappraisal, I did do the informal hearing. And they did come and do another site inspection and they adjusted, you know, the figure that they gave. And so I didn't have to go through the formal appeal process. You know, so I don't know how many people, you know, when they see, because we're gonna be looking at big changes. You know, I don't know how many hours we have for the formal hearings, you know, if it's gotta be done in three days.
No, no.
You know, or we can spread it out so we can accommodate everybody.
Oh, you can't deny anybody here.
Oh, they're gonna be a lot of eye openings with, with the new values going out.
There's eye openings, but you have to defend those and stick to your guns. Uh, if, if those values are well documented and well um, well defended, you know, then it's, it's not negotiate because you don't like that number, it's that the appellant, the taxpayer, has to present some evidence of why the property isn't worth that.
So I guess to Albert's comment, I'm just thinking money, um, if you would be in those informal meetings or not? Cause I'm just thinking, yeah, you said you would, but I'm just saying, if you weren't and they conducted those and there was no grievance, because you didn't have to take that next step, then is there, there's gonna be an additional cost if all of a sudden we have a grievance and go through you?
How do you play let's make a deal though, in an informal hearing? I, I mean, it's, if it's not statutorily required.
That's how it's make a deal, nothing, nothing is documented, nothing is needed.
I'm all for trying to save the nickel for the town, but I guess.
I, I think it's an issue of transparency, Lisa, that's, that's.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not worried about that, because I think if you're meeting with Tyler, there's a level of transparency there, but it seems like if you're having informal hearing, then I'm not required to provide any documentation if they're, if, like what Albert said was, he came, they came back out, they looked at it and, you know, they stayed in the driveway and here's my number, here's your number, kinda thing.
No, that wasn't.
I mean, otherwise, if I come to a grievance, I'm gonna come prepared with documentation to say.
That's the way it should be.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
If the reappraisal is done correctly, it shouldn't be a matter of haggling over what the value should be, it should be a matter of presenting evidence.
Well, that's why I think it should be, and, you know, it should be one or the other, I don't think it should be both.
It can't be both, it can't be both, it can't be one or the other, it can be both, but it can't be one or the other. You can't have informal hearings and not have Lister's grievance.
I know, I just, but.
But the informal hearings should not take the place of the legal process of.
But you don't have to have the informal, you could just have the grievance.
Correct.
And that's what this MOU was saying.
Yeah.
That's my preference all along, in, I don't know how many years of doing this with Dad, at least fifteen, and Dad did it for how many years before that? We never, ever did informal hearings.
Yeah.
But we were there as the contractor for, one of us was there for all of it.
It's gonna be a cost no matter what we do, you're not getting out of this, the hope is that you just, you know, Albert.
I was just gonna say, you know, and that, because there are gonna be a lot of people that aren't aware of the process and what uh, how to present their argument, they just come in and says, my house isn't worth that value. You know, I hope we can get the message out to.
A letter comes and tells you though, that says, like, if you wanna, if, that, this is how it used to come, maybe it's changed. You're gonna send me a letter that says, my house is increased in value by a hundred thousand dollars.
By law, we have to send that, anytime any parcel changes by a hundred dollars or more, we must send that change of assessment.
And then, uh, with that is going to be a letter that says, statutorily, I'm entitled, entitled to grieve that. This is the process for grieving, these are the days and the times for grievance. It is my responsibility as the property owner to email, call, or whatever and set that time.
Yes, but I'm just saying that I would like to see them get some instructions that just don't show up, follow that protocol, come prepared with numbers.
It says that, it, it says that in the letter, you're supposed to bring comparables, you're supposed to bring, that it could be required that we go out and do another.
By law, we don't have to include that, but I think it's good, um, good PR and good public education.
But I know the, the letter, when we did it before, it's, there was a letter that said that, because it said about bringing comparables, that it had to be in your community, all those kinds of things.
Yeah.
I mean, you can't demand that any taxpayer does that, any taxpayer can come in and grieve and just say, I don't like this value. I mean, they probably won't be successful, but by law, the bar is very low, any person can come in in any year and say they don't like their assessed value.
Right.
They can come in and say they don't like their taxes, that really doesn't get to make work, I don't have any control over your taxes.
Yeah.
No, doing the twenty-six, twenty-seven tax.
Well, it won't be lodged till twenty.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty.
That'll be a question you'll get, how, how do I know if I wanna grieve if I don't know what my taxes are gonna be? So, and that's, you know.
Well, I mean, if your property, you know, it's based on where your property goes up. I mean, I would think too, and you can always just look back at your taxes for a rough estimate of, of what the tax rate is.
Well, so the tax rate's gonna change, because our tax rate is this complicated formula that is, is, is adjusted by school spending, but then it's also adjusted by the CLA, which is the sales ratio.
Right.
So if our CLA, I forget what it exactly is in Proctor, I think it's sixty-something, maybe seventy, seventy at the highest. Um, anyway, um, that will be adjusted to roughly a hundred percent um, for this reappraisal. So if your property, say, was under assessed by a larger margin than that, um, you, you might get more than a minimal increase. If, if your property was assessed pretty much in line with that level of the CLA, you shouldn't see a tremendous change. I mean, I never promised anybody, taxes go up in any year, you see your taxes go up a couple hundred dollars a year because the state's base rate changes or the CLA changes.
Yeah.
Um, so you have that, but that's what the CLA is supposed to do, is supposed to even that out. If the CLA is at all accurate and if it's, if it applies at all fairly throughout town, the adjustment to the tax rate should even that out, yes, that's the whole point of it.
Yeah.
So that a town that's only appraising at fifty percent and a town that's appraising at a hundred percent aren't at the same tax rate, that's what equalization is all about.
Yeah. Okay, so, questions about the memorandum in front of you that she's requesting?
As long as we put everything out there and give them a good explanation.
All we, all we would need to do is approve this MOU, we don't need to talk about anything else with the appraisal process or anything. It's just the changes in the um, contract, is this, and are you agreeable to just get rid of the informal meetings?
Yeah, I think I could, I could commit to coming to you at a future date to talk about how's the best way to present this to our taxpayers? And, you know, use this board as, as kind of the sounding board for that, what would make sense to most taxpayers to explain it.
And I think it's probably a good idea, we have a pretty significant turnover, so it's the first time a lot of people have gone through reappraisal. So just understand, you know, how, how to grieve your property.
Absolutely.
And that there is a timeframe, because we've also seen that before too, that then people get their tax bill and they lose their minds. And it's like daylight and a dollar short, kinda thing.
There, there's no way to fix that, you aren't gonna get your tax bill until uh, July and you're gonna be dealing with the, the grievances in June. Um, so my hope would be to get, uh, get that preliminary grant list out a little earlier than we usually do. We usually go for June fourth and sometimes get an extension on that. I'd like to get it out earlier in like mid-May to give us plenty of time to hear those grievances, because I'm gonna be doing the same in Pollitt.
About the twenty-six, twenty-seven, because this is all gonna be wanted completed, if we can get it completed.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Before that tax bill goes out, so you're not chasing.
We've got a tight timeframe here, I can probably stagger with, Pollitt sends out their tax bills quite a bit later. So I can probably do uh, Proctor first and then stagger Pollitt where they're doing a reappraisal as well. And Chittin just tonight opted to delay their reappraisal to twenty-twenty-seven. Um, so that's gonna give us all a little bit more breathing room for me to do three thousand, supervise all that, times three was a lot. Um, this'll make it a lot more, more doable.
Okay.
Get it out there sooner for Proctor, because I know you have those four installments, you gotta get your tax bills out.
Unless we wait until twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that. Well, it, it, that's gonna be weird then, because you're grieving on something, but you're paying on the past, I think.
Well, you've already, well, you're paying on what's already been looked at and there's no grievance, but you're.
Yeah, I, I think.
Time frame is a long time.
Yeah, we've spent a lot of money, I think that we just, we have to.
I think you would not behoove Proctor, I think Proctor should, should move forward with it.
We wanna get our CLA.
Chittin is delaying it for a lot of reasons, the, the data isn't there and Chittin, they have no zoning, first of all, so. I can find whole houses out in the woods there that have never been assessed, there's, there's a lot um. The data is a lot easier to keep track of here in Proctor, you're, you're so compact, it's, it's walkable most to Proctor, so.
Remindful with that deadline and.
Yeah.
Oh, I think.
That line in the contract too, isn't there?
Absolutely, absolutely, and it is mid, mid-May to get that informal uh, grant list out, which is a good two weeks earlier. And then, yes, you have to hear as many as, as you have.
Yeah, so a motion will be in order to approve the MOU with the um, correction. And Judy will give that to you and then you all just email our new one tomorrow and then um, I can come in and sign it.
Okay, perfect, perfect, yeah.
Do you know where I'm at, do you need this, or do you know, do you need this to where I pointed out?
Um, no, we're just gonna say, agree uh, not to have, not to have Tyler conduct, not to Tyler conduct informal, that's all I.
Okay.
And then just email that to Judy?
Alright, so I'll, I'll email you that correction.
Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
So. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And happy to give you updates as we go along.
Sure.
You want me to come in every other month or something?
Uh, or, I mean, if you get these from them, you can just send those to Judy too, till we get ready to talk about like, how we wanna share the grievance information, I think.
Um, I will ask them for progress updates too and, and make sure those get CC'd to Judy.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
That's kinda nice to have, because I know they've already made progress from that one.
Yeah, then our, that can just go in our packets and for informational.
Awesome.
Alright, thank you.
Albert, you have a great night, everybody.
Good too.
Alright, a motion would be in order at six forty-seven to enter the Board of Water Commissioners.
So move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alright, so you have in your pocket a handout about the curb stops and whether they have a curb stop, they're the top money people, as you can see by the um, total, and what it would cost.
And one of them, the one, let's see, that's, that where, there is no curb, well, it had no curb stop, we found one curb stop. The other one, we couldn't find, and that one, um, the one, two, three, fifth one down. That one did come in and paid on the account.
Paid partial?
Um, I believe it was like five thousand.
What they?
What, where, thirty-three, where is that?
Forty-three hundred.
Huh?
Well, they paid, I think they paid current to.
Oh.
Like this one due this month.
So they're.
I think it was that much, it's like nine thousand they owe.
They're paid in full?
With, with.
Property?
Yeah, because there's four units.
Oh, that's, that's the apartment house.
Yeah, the two apartments.
Yeah.
The notes under cost to install was maybe helpful?
So the notes.
It's what you guys wanted.
Yeah, so last time we asked her to bring back the highest delinquencies, whether they had a curb stop or not, and what the cost would be to put, if they don't have one, to put it in. Because we talked at the last meeting, there were some that owe, owe some big numbers, and what's the total, like one fifty or one?
The total of everybody, well, now it's down to, I think, one twenty-nine?
So these ten people owe fifty thousand dollars collectively, so.
They were a third of the.
Yeah, so the question was, you know, what, if they didn't have a curb stop, what was gonna cost to put that curb stop in? Rather than allowing that number just to continue on and on.
Right, what my had said though was, where it says cost to install, there's a note in there where it says lean tax sale.
Oh.
Was that helpful to get that paid in full? I mean, was that presenting?
Well, they didn't know that.
No.
No.
Okay.
But they still don't have a curb stop, so.
They have one curb stop and then the other one, what I've been told is um, it, the main. They have one curb stop and then the other one, what I've been told is, um, the main, don't, I don't know how this happens, but it did, um, goes through the basement.
Oh, well, I mean, they're not the only one in that area.
So, um, but anyway, they paid, the second one also paid.
Okay.
On the account.
The second one on this list?
Yes.
So they're paid in full too?
Um, I don't believe in full, but I'd have to double check with them. They did say he paid them.
Okay. So, that is nice. Oh, the, okay, so properties that are, have, um, action being taken on them will receive the funds if the property sells then?
Right, right. And we thought, they did some shut offs last week. I think they did, oh, eight maybe?
Eight were shut off?
I believe, yeah.
And where it says tax sale, does that mean we're putting those properties up or we need to put those properties up?
Um, sup- supposedly it is supposed to be tax sailed. I don't believe any, anything has been done.
Okay.
On them.
Okay.
That is out of my realm.
Is that the fourth one down you're talking about? First one, yeah.
First one.
Well, it's the same, first and fourth.
Two properties, same owner.
Curb stop.
Yeah, they don't have water, neither has water on it.
The water's been turned off there for a while.
Yeah.
On both of them now, so.
Okay. So.
Of the ones that they shut off last week, I believe, I'd have to try to remember. I think most of them, if not all of them, came back, came in and paid, so.
So paid in full, paid, made a new agreement?
Yeah, one paid, didn't pay in full, made an agreement, didn't have an agreement before.
Okay.
Um, another one paid up, the, they had an agreement and missed a couple, they paid all of those plus the current.
Yeah.
So.
And do they realize then, when they make the agreement, that if they break the agreement, the water can be turned off?
Correct, it says that, yeah.
Okay, so do we want to, um, expend the funds for the two where the, um, dollar amounts listed to dig and put curb stops in? What's your feeling on those?
Well, we gotta, I thought that was our idea is to get a-
Well, I mean, the, the second one's paying now, so.
Yeah, my fear is though, it seems to be habitual.
Right, right.
And.
But that's gonna, that's, that's a major project, major.
So a project they can't do?
Yeah.
That's number two?
Yeah, and what about the other one? The seventh one, can they do that one?
Yes, that should, is more minor and it might be just right off the road.
So can we have them do that one?
Yep.
Can we plan the second one for the spring? Because I think it does, we're doing a disservice to the community by not being proactive in improving the infrastructure so that one, the problem doesn't continue to occur. And two, if you had an issue, I can't imagine not having your own curb stop.
Right.
It, it's just problematic, I think.
Yep.
So, but i- if they can't do it and we have to hire someone, I'm happy to put that off, but I'd like to see the other one done. And then hopefully we can, the, the one and four will go up for tax sale then. And then are we?
There is another one they're doing work on that just needs a new, the curb stop needs to, a new box on it so they can do that. But that allows, that requires digging too on the property.
Okay, and what about number six? What, what are we doing there? Oh, the water shut off there, but someone's living there.
I don't think anybody's living there. I think they
Why is the-
Just dropped that off there.
The Jeep?
I think so.
Oh, it's just-
I don't think anybody's living, I don't know how they can be living in there.
So is that delinquent on property taxes too?
Um, I, it's, yeah, it isn't ta- in taxes.
So that's something that needs to be looked at for a tax sale too?
And she has.
Okay.
Apparently, uh, someone holds a mortgage on it and they wouldn't talk to her about it, so. I don't think it's a bank that holds a mortgage, it's someone else.
But they're delinquent on property taxes or they're?
Yeah.
Why do you have to talk to them if they're delinquent?
Well, I think she was trying to get her to pay up or do a deal, let her know, be, you have to notify her.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah.
And then I notice, um, the one by the park isn't on here. Have they paid or?
Um, no.
Okay.
No. They're supposed, I talked to the property manager and they're gonna be sending in all the delinquent amount and then the current amount. I gave her.
Okay, so that's why they're not on the list?
And then she's dealing separately with Celia on the taxes.
Okay, that would be great. We'd love to see that. And then-
And they weren't actually one of the highest, that's why they were on here.
They weren't? Okay, um, and number eight, what about that one? What's happening there?
Um, I haven't heard anything further from them as far as selling.
Okay.
Now, wouldn't we put a lien on that just to collect that amount?
Which-
It automatically has a lien on if they're delinquent, yeah. Um, and then number nine, did they come in and pay anything?
Um, I don't believe so. I'd have to check with them downstairs tomorrow.
Okay, so are, is that on the list to shut off or no?
Um, not yet, because of the letter, the notice going out.
Okay.
Late.
And number ten, is someone living in that house?
Yes.
Okay.
With, they have an agreement that is consistently broken.
Okay. Okay, so walking away from this, my, my understanding is that the expectation is that number seven, we're going to dig and put a curb stop in.
Yeah.
That one and four will be tax sailed and we'll have information, um, let's say by the last October meeting?
Yeah, I might suggest that the board actually go and, and ask about that.
Okay, I will do that. And then-
For all of you.
And then number six could be the same, right, as number one and four?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and number three?
I mean, I could actually tax sail that just off the delinquent water sewer too.
Uh, number three is, still has water or do, they don't?
They do. They did come in and paid, um, I think five, four fifty on it, but then I, someone was in after that.
So when it, with the note that's there, is that like the first time? I mean, that, that could go on for a year.
The, the third one?
Yeah, the note there.
That's being foreclosed. Oh, yeah, I know, I know.
Okay.
And they came in and paid four fifty, um, this month and so I go to see if they pay more. They're supposed to. But we know where that curb stop is and.
And they have an agreement or they don't?
They do.
Okay. Okay, questions? Thoughts? I mean, we're coming to the end of time to shut people off too. I mean, not that there's any joy in shutting people off, but.
Yeah, no, right. I was just gonna ask, what do we decide was gonna be, uh, what we were gonna do for number five?
Number five? Well, they came in and-
They paid.
Yes, but, you know, we were gonna try and get everybody with a, on the right of way curb stop.
But that is almost, that's gonna cost a fortune. Like I said, the water main goes right through the basement.
For two, we said.
So the shut off is in their basement.
You know, so is that something we might want to put on the table for some time in the future then, looking at possibly doing that?
So what would that mean? It would be our responsibility to remove it from the basement to discontinue that?
We could do, I don't know if you could do like a T-bone, like where it goes through, if you could disconnect and connect it to maybe their other one. Or you don't even want to do that, because you want them separate in case they're ever separated.
But why did they?
Just to the main and then.
Why did they have two?
Because they have a house back there, an apartment building behind, at the end of the driveway.
Oh, I thought it was just the apartment building.
The house has apartments and the garage has apartment.
Oh, but I'm saying to put a curb stop in for, um-
The front one, I think it's front.
Couldn't we just cut the pipe and cap it? I mean-
But that main goes to the next house.
The main, oh, our main?
Our main.
So we have to move the main from their garage, or from their basement? And to do that, we need an engineer?
Yeah, you'd need a whole reconstruction of the main being brought outside, because if you cap it on this side, they don't have water.
Yeah.
On this side. So how do you connect these people to water without?
Well, that's what I'm saying. This is the house. It's going through the house. It comes in back here. You cap it here, you cap it here and you reroute the water. So the water coming into this house, you put a curb stop in and reroute it. And the water that was coming through to this other house, it's capped here. And now there has to be a water line, the, there has to be a water line someplace out here, right?
Well, the water line from this house kind of goes this way to the next house, so it's right up against their, their curb stops like right on there, right against the foundation. It's a, it's a mess.
I don't know.
It sounds easier, I know, because I talked to them about it and just they explained, i- it's like, okay, we shut it off here. We've got to reconnect there, but their main is through their house, so where do you connect that main to without digging up the road and going out to the, you know, around to the other main?
To your main, yeah.
God, I would think if, if I was the property owner, I'd come to town and demand that. I wouldn't want that in my basement. I would think that would be a liability with my insurance. That's just me, but, because if the ma- if the main goes, think about the pressure that's in your basement.
Well, if we could get in the basement and look at it, it, we could find maybe something different. We might find that, oh, it goes out here and there's a shut, you know?
They won't, anyway, do we have a nurse?
They won't, nobody was there and they wouldn't answer the door, who was it?
But does the property owner live on, live on site?
Yeah.
Oh, well, there you go.
But, but the tenant told her that we were there to shut water off. That's why she came in and paid.
Okay, so maybe the plan is, as we're planning for spring, that should go on the spring schedule. And we could do a little more preliminary investigation, i.e. contact the property owner, set up a time so we could be in the basement to see what it looks like. Um, and then it, it may be worse than we think.
Okay.
How big is the main?
Well, the, the very, probably six or eight inch.
Yeah, I don't know if it's six inches up there.
Yeah, it might be a four.
Yeah.
But that's what we got over down at Metcalf's. The main is right in the, in the basement that goes to garden and.
So I think with a main that goes here, goes like, so goes this way, so goes in front of the house, towards that other house. And then the other apartment sits back here and I have a feeling their water, their line goes, ties into the main up here. That's why they have a separate shut off and these people have a separate shut off.
Well, I just think as we're finding these problems, it would be to our benefit to clean them up and-
Oh, definitely, but it's not in the budget. We can't just do them. You're talking thousands of dollars.
Right, but we're gonna harvest up in Chittenden, that money's all going in the water.
Right, right, but that's not happening either.
But at least document it so it's on record that.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, it'd be ideal and that's what we talk about when we talk about grants, like we don't need grants for flooding. We don't need grants for housing. We need grants for infrastructure.
Right. No, I get that, but, yeah. I'm just saying, as we're building out the work schedule, it doesn't hurt to put those two things.
Right, and I would love to get some grants for just this.
And, and, and part of that sometimes is you have to be shovel ready, so it's to our benefit to look at them and work on those. Okay. Alright, anything else in water? Do we need to go in? Oh, yeah, we do. Do we need to go into sewer?
Um, not really, because I'll update you in my report if you want.
So just a question with the water, is there any concerns with this drought that we're, no rain?
Um, there is, so the state contacted me and, because they are concerned about, you know, I mean, if you see somebody watering their yard, tell them not to. Um, if you, um-
You don't even need to see it. If their lawn is green, you become a free-
Well, mine's kind of green, but I don't water it, okay?
Well, I've seen people watering automatic sprinklers going.
Right, oh, I know. It's just, it, they're very concerned about, you know, the water, not even wells, but water sys- our water system.
There's a lot of people on this aquifer.
Huh?
There's a lot, there's a lot of people besides us drawing from the aquifer.
Right.
Yeah. Branding the others.
And, and that was another concern with, um, with the fireworks when, you know, the fire department wasn't too keen on going down there and spraying thousands of gallons of water for fireworks when
And you have to refill that.
Yeah, the hydrants are drained, like we hook up to a hydrant and you're draining it with a thousand gallons of water and we don't have any water.
Yeah, now I get that.
There's no way to measure what that aquifer is, the level on the.
So just pray for rain.
We don't have any way to tell.
No, okay. Well, I know that we fill the tanks, we run from the tanks.
Yeah.
And.
We should be able to tell what the fill run is from the tanks.
The fill rate.
If it's faster or slower.
How big that aquifer?
Well, we know how big it is. I mean, it's been mapped. We know it runs from here all the way down Pittsburgh and like that. We know the dimensions of it.
Same.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I think it's just, you have to be-
Don't be wasteful.
Yeah, it's-
Don't be fluffing off when you brush your teeth.
Like, you know, with the fill rate.
Particularly if you're a third world country.
If you have a reduced fill rate going into these tanks, all of a sudden, and so and they're checked all the time, these flow rates, are we running into anything as of late?
We haven't run into anything yet, no. So, but we definitely, they're definitely warning.
Be prudent in your, you know. Wash everything together. Don't separate. Pretend like you're a main.
Drink only bottled water.
Yeah.
Don't flush.
We don't, we don't need to send anything out to people that say, you know, take precautions with-
Because we don't really know.
Yeah, we don't. Right, okay.
We hope rain's coming. Alright, a motion would be in order at seven oh seven to move out of the Board of Water Commissioners and back into the regular select board meeting.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Alright, any other business? Alright, you have the sheriff's report in your pocket. Any questions about that? Alright, and Judy in the town manager's report?
Okay, so public works completed the sure pack and topsoil on the edges of Gorham Bridge Road. Um, they were working on water shut offs this past week and roadwork on Kane and Park Street. So they kind of held off a little because they all, we need all of them to do the sure pack because they have to flag and stuff, so that took them up for a few days. Uh, but it looks really nice, I think.
So I wanted to just say that they were doing, explain, some of them, a couple of them explained to me how they were doing, putting the edge on the road with the gravel, I guess it was, it was the way they were doing, they were saving a lot of time, a lot of money, working real smart, so I just wanted to say, you know, kudos to those guys for what they were doing because they were, they were being very, you know, they took a lot of initiative to come up with those ideas on how to do
Right.
what they were doing.
Yep.
And, uh, yeah, they were doing really a good, good job instead of standing there with a shovel and, you know, how to do that.
Right.
You know, they were doing a great job.
But they're not state employees.
No, they were doing very good, you know, and they explained, you know, a whole bunch of how they were doing. I was very impressed.
No, they did. In fact, we, I had one guy, and this is, I love it when I go to them with something and they already know it and they're on top of it. And I had one homeowner say, I really don't want the sure pack on my, on my lawn, because then it goes into my lawn, you know, and I mow and it's right up the edge of stuff, so he said, I'd like topsoil. And so I let them know and they said, no, we already know it. We're doing, we're already putting topsoil on that, so, yeah. But, but it looks good. It does, it looks really nice. And it is a lot of work. I mean, it's, some of those, I mean, the edgings were pretty high up.
Yeah, 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 on Gorham Bridge, yeah. He didn't want to cut too bad.
Uh, foresters still finishing up marking the trees on the forest property in Florence. Um, he came in last week to look at the map again, so he should be finishing that up. And we're gonna try to go to, uh, get bids on that for finishing up that part of it. And then he is gonna try to get up to Chittenden to start finding a, a reroute.
for finishing up that part of it. And then he is gonna try to get up to Chittenden to start finding a, a reroute or to see if the road that's there is actually accessible still to get in and try to get easements for people. Um, sent in a request for reimbursement on the wastewater treatment facility upgrades. Uh, step one and two, because they were completed. I did the application, sent everything in and the state wrote back and said, we don't want two separate applications, we want one. Please put them all in chronological order and make sure you attach all the invoices in one PDF file and then resend it to me. So they had all the information in front of them, but they wanted it in a different format. Um, so we did that. Uh, okay, we've talked about the maces already. Um, met with the carving studio and others to discuss, discuss the resurrection of the sculpture of Omea property and placement of the sculpture. So there, I think I mentioned this last time maybe, there's a sculpture over here by Omea that they think is part of the sculptures from nineteen sixty-eight that were over here in the shopyard. I don't know if you remember when all the sculptures came in and from all over the country and stuff. And they think that one was left here and somehow it got buried and now it's kind of through the ground and someone found out about it and wanted to resurrect it. And the state, get federal funding for it to do so, to get a crane, to move it, to clean it. Wanted it someplace, um, in a, the theme was, all of those that were there were moved to a, um, truck stop somewhere along the line.
Rest stops.
Rest stops, sorry, trucks.
And then they threw them over the fence and they found some of them now, yeah.
So there's no proof that this one is that one, but it looks it, but like, somebody said, a lot of marble back then, the way they cut it was graded that way, so it's hard to tell. Uh, I met with Omea and we were both, and also the carving studio, seemed to be in agreement that if we did do this, we would like Proctor to have the sculpture. We don't want it moved to a rest area, it's ours. It was left here, Omea's willing to give it to us and we put it here. So the person who's pushing to have it elsewhere, um, said, okay, you do that, you're not getting any funding. The state will not fund it unless it's on state property. So he said it'll be on your dime. So I said, well, if Omea donates it to us for nothing and the carving studio is willing to get people in here to clean it up and stuff, then we could probably get some funding somewhere to maintain it. So it's kind of left in limbo now. I wanna talk to Omea again just to see.
So who was at this meeting, just out of curiosity?
So it was, um, the, um, I wanna say art curator for the state of Vermont.
Okay.
Um, one who was just a volunteer for this whole program and got involved. Um, and then Noel from the carving studio and myself. I met with Joel separately.
Yeah, okay.
But, yeah, he didn't wanna be part of this whole.
So how big is the statue?
It's, uh.
Where would we put it?
You could put it in the park. You could put it in the triangle.
A triangle would be a nice spot.
Um. You know, I mean, they're abstract.
That's alright.
It's not gonna be, yeah. Um. Yeah. I, I think that's like a I'm gonna say it, a nasty attitude from the state or whoever the individual was. I mean, you're supposed to be like working with communities to improve tourism and all of that.
Yep.
This is the marble kind of home.
Right.
And it was the state and the federal government that took them and threw them over the fence at these rust stops. And now they've come back in vogue and so now they wanna, you know.
Everyone by the end seemed to be, Noel was really in agreement with me. Um, the other individual that was volunteered seemed to come that way too, it's just this one individual. And he's pushing to have it in Fair Haven rest area. He said, it's close by, it's part of Rutland County, just keep it in Rutland County and then.
And what is his name?
Funding. His name is, I'd have to go over there and look.
And he works for who? The federal government?
State.
The state.
He's an art curator or. Huh? I know, I just, cause I said even here or even on, like at the landing at the riverside, you know, when you come, I said, it's an entrance to Proctor, we have that plot right on the top.
Yeah.
You could put it there.
Yeah.
But.
I mean, you could even put it like just in front of the welcome sign there. I mean, you could.
Right.
I mean, you might have to build it up a little bit because of the way that property goes down, but you could actually even put it there.
Yep.
It's close to a state highway then.
I know.
Help him.
It's off the state highway and people can pull over and rest there.
Yeah. I mean, that is just.
So I get a circle back with, oh man, just see, it's kind of been in limbo now, just cause I don't wanna put, I don't wanna invest money into it.
Right.
The carving studio offered a lot of, you know, volunteer and support with.
Yeah, you're gonna need like, as you said, to move it, something.
Right.
So it just matter moving it and cleaning it up.
Right, and then putting it on a foundation. I don't know why you'd need to, you could probably just put it in the ground, but if you made a cement base or.
Well, probably, so it's, because it looks like, is it kinda resting or is it?
It's a so, it was on a base and then that piece is on there. They don't even know if the base is over there that it was resting at.
Oh, okay, so it's a lot of new shot.
Yeah, so it's, I get updates, all.
Okay.
All for me. Um. Sent bid request out for propane oil due back the thirteenth, so we'll have it at the next meeting. Um, I ordered dumpster, dumpsters for dump day, uh, processed tickets. We talked about switching the dates because the guys were, a lot of them were away and it became a real, but we're sticking with the fourth, it's just easier.
Okay.
Hazardous waste is still coming at the same time, so.
Okay.
Um, so that's good.
And then can you just, um, send the acceptable items so we can post that and get that out?
Yep. Um. So I, I, when I did this, there were two, two truckloads of sewage I had been transported, but I was down there last week and another truck was down there loading up then. So, um, they took that out.
And they're bringing.
Have you noticed that, Jay?
I have.
Commentary.
They came through, one truck I saw came through very slow, very careful.
No, you noticed it just the truck or you noticed that?
No, and everything's been good. I just blame the wife.
You just what?
Blame the wife for the odor.
Well, it's funny, cause when that truck came down, he hadn't even loaded and I walked by and I was like and it wasn't sewage that was in that truck, so I don't know what he had before he got this load of sewage, but it reeked.
Notice anything?
Right, yeah.
Anything, any odor of any kind?
Well, I'm hoping they keep moving along, there, there's been a lot of little hiccups, so with parts. I mean, nothing on the guys doing the work down there.
No.
It's just the high ups.
Well.
So, yeah.
Okay. Alright, and I see the dispute from last meeting, Hayden.
Hayden full.
Appreciate that. Appreciate that. Um, other older new business, um, I did have one thought. A lot of people are parking in the pool parking lot.
I noticed that.
Which, I, I, is neither here nor there for me, I'm not getting into that.
Right.
Parking lot.
But I did notice that.
I do feel like though, um, because people are parking kinda off season, let's say so to speak, we're coming into inclement weather. We need to maybe put a sign or two, park at your own risk.
Right.
Um, you know, i- if you were parking in a public parking lot, there, there'd be a sign like that.
Right.
I just wanna hear that, you know, they plow in there when they plow, they push snow in there.
Right.
So, um, or, you know, all of a sudden a limb or something comes down.
Yeah.
So I just think that would be good.
Okay.
I mean.
Yeah, I noticed it in the morning, I'm like going, whose car, why are those cars over there?
Yeah. So does they, they need that area to move snow?
Usually when they come like around the corner or something like that, they'll push in there.
Yeah.
Like sometimes when they come down park, usually they come up holding and they push up like towards the pool, like up there. And sometimes when they come down through the intersection, that's just another place to push it in there, you know? Because where, where are you pushing the intersection snow, there, you know, there's.
Cause they pushed a lot into LaFons even last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but the parking lot is basically a vacant spot that they can push a lot.
Yeah, and so, and I don't know, and maybe we wanna think about that, you know, like.
Yeah, nothing from November first.
Well, I mean, we parked there for school events and stuff, so, you know, I hate to say that.
Sometimes.
And like, I mean, not overnight parking so to speak, but we use it for that. I just think, a- and I don't wanna get into like people shouldn't park there, it's a public parking lot, whatever. I just think that, you know, you wanna protect yourself.
Right.
That.
Yeah, we don't wanna be liable either.
Yes, I don't wanna hear somebody come and say, oh, whoa, they were plowing snow and somebody hit, you know? Or I didn't know there were railroad ties there when there was snow and I drove up on them, you know, like.
Yeah.
I don't wanna hear someone's tale of whoa when you're in there. I think when you park at a public parking lot, you park at your own risk. That's, that's my feeling. So I just think maybe put a sign up there and just say that, you know?
Okay.
I, I think the only sign there right now just says like pool parking or something like that on the tree.
Yeah.
So, I think that tree needs to come down, but that's just.
They looked at it and they said that they couldn't see where it was that bad.
Did they, do you put, tip their heads back, right, and look up?
But he said it wasn't dead, the tree itself wasn't dead.
Constantly, so, alright, right.
So I did talk to one of the logistics people at Omea about this piece of equipment.
Oh, you did?
They're gonna get hold of V T R.
Okay.
And inquire about it. I told him I wasn't gonna call him, but I'll go through them.
We could use it for the fall festivals, touch a truck, you know?
Antique machinery.
It's like it's a tie mover of some kind, I think, I don't know.
Eight, it's been left out in the rain.
Talk about it, see if they can get it out of sight.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It hasn't weathered itself well, so.
He was gonna look into it.
Alright, anything else? Alright. Jaden, any, any comments from you as you've observed our very professional meeting?
Um, well, I certainly think that session should be ours. I don't want that to vary. I did, I did wanna speak about, uh, how would I, like, file for something to be discussed in one of these, uh, meetings?
Well, you can just come and during public session now, you can talk about it. Or if you wanna write a letter, you can write a letter to the town manager and she can add it as an agenda item.
Okay.
So it's kind of up to you either way. Every meeting, um, like number four or, yeah, number four on the agenda is open public comment, you can talk about anything there. Doesn't necessarily mean action's going to be taken, just means we're gonna hear and listen to it. Um, if it's something a little more in detail, you can write a letter, send an email, speak to the town manager. I mean, I don't know what it is, problematic or whatever, and she can help and decide maybe it needs to be an agenda item, something you know, like that, but yeah, so we meet the second and fourth Mondays, um, so we'll meet.
Except the next meeting won't be on Monday, it's gonna be Tuesday, but to, on October.
Tuesday, October?
It'll be the fourteenth instead of thirteenth.
Cause it's indigenous day. Indigenous day. Um, so it'll be, yeah, Tuesday, fourteen.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Alright, but they're on the website, so if you ever have a question.
I need my card too if you want, so you have my email.
Oh, okay.
Okay, alright, a motion would be in order at seven twenty-four to adjourn.
So.
All those in favor? We are adjourned, thank, thank you.